I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on OnCath Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to rockland, wrpsrockland.com for further information. First order of business under community announcements is the introduction of Town Administrator Jim Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shall I stand or go to the microphone?
I know. You're actually in a good spot.
I'm in a good spot. Thank you, sir. My name is, just so the viewing public, Mr. Chairman, can put a name to a face, my name is James Purcell. I am your, I am your third interim town administrator. I'm very, very pleased to, to be here. I'm very excited to, the town of Rockland is really turning a corner. I have had, I experienced doing this on an interim basis. After thirty-six years of municipal management, I retired nearly nine years ago, and since that time, I've served in interim capacities in North Andover, Sherburne, Ashland, Carmer, Swansea, West Boylston, Douglas, Lester, Avon, and now here. I've had some easy assignments, relatively speaking, and I've had some real challenges as well. I think this is somewhere in between, given the time period that I've arrived in the town of Rockland. I am optimistic about your future, and I hope I can be helpful to, until a new permanent person is named. Thank you.
Jim, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
So far, so good. I have a community announcement also. Emily Harrison's here from Reimagine Rockland, the Open Space Committee Highlight, Rockland Cleanup Day.
Hi. My name's Emily Harrison, and I'm part of the Reimagine Rockland group. And I'd like to announce to everybody that we are having a cleanup day on April 20th. It's a Saturday. We're going to meet at the town hall at 10:00 a.m. It is co-sponsored by the Open Space Committee, the Park Department, and the Highway Department, and we're going to be offering refreshments in the morning for all the volunteers. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can email Reimagine Rockland to give us a heads-up that you're coming, or you can just show up morning up.
Were we showing up behind town hall again?
Actually, in the front of the town hall.
In front of the town hall?
Yeah. It's going to be better.
At 10:00.
10:00 a.m. Thank you.
We'll be there with our gloves on.
Thanks.
Thanks, Emily.
Next on the minutes of the meeting, of the open session of March 19, 2019.
I make the motion to approve the open session, meeting minutes of March 19, 2019.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Back and vote. Now, the special town meeting line, approved and sent to the fire committee.
So, I was looking at some of these articles earlier for the special town meeting. Some of them, as you see in the book, haven't got a amount listed in it yet. Those amounts should be coming out shortly, but these...
Excellent. Anybody?
I make motion to refer to the finance committee.
Second, then. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's a vote. Next, the Assistant Town Administrator Contracting Act, Mr. Mullen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board and other public at home knows, we launched an effort, this board did, I think, beginning around the end of January, beginning of February, I want to say, to post the open position of our town's Assistant Town Administrator. And we had about thirty applicants, conducted six interviews, met some really good candidates along the way, but I'm very excited. There was one candidate, when she came before us, oh, she really, oh, shined through. And that candidate was, oh, Jen Verratti, Constable from Hull. And Jen is a member of the Hull Board of Selectmen. But in addition to that, her experience working especially for the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and has really given her a range of experiences, in addition to her experience as a local official, where she just demonstrated right away that she's going to really be able to help us pick up where we left off with Marcy and her previous role, and really just hit the ground running. And I'm, oh, you know, right at the beginning of the interview, I can listen to Jen in hearing why she wanted to come to Rockland and work for, you know, us and all the residents of the town. I was just extremely excited on the experience that she'll bring, the passion that she'll bring, and twice over the course of, you know, her conversations with us and then with the board. You know, one of the things, and I know their presence to Rockland as well, is, you know, the responsiveness, you know, she really wanted to provide, you know, to town residents to make sure that, you know, everyone's input was valued and heard and listened to and considered. And we have a lot of exciting things happening right now, and to have Jen as a member, like in part of that team is very exciting. So the board, just to enter it into the record, the board has entered into a fourteen-month contract with Miss Constable at a rate of, I believe, $80,000 a year. That is outlined in the contract, which will be available as all, as all, as all of our contracts are. But again, I'm really excited to have Jen on board. Like, I can't emphasize enough how much, oh, she really shone through, and it's just, like, I think she'll be a really perfect fit for Rockland, so. Over that, I'd like to just welcome Jen. Jen, if you have anything to, I'll just say introduce yourself to the town and...
Come on, shut the door. Thank you, and thank you to the board for giving us opportunity. When it presented itself, I thought, you know what? This is a pretty, there's a lot of exciting things going on in Rockland. As Mr. Mullen explained, I do come with both local and state direct experience, as well as experience with federal grant management. The position being focused on community and economic development is well within my wheelhouse, and so I know I'm stepping into some highly respected shoes, and I look forward to carrying on the work that this board and Marcy has already undertaken. I've met a number of residents so far, and other town hall employees, and everyone is, seems so eager to just continue to move forward, and I really, I thank you for the opportunity to be part of that.
I spoke to Marcy, bearing in mind this morning, she's going to be in on the seventh, and starting the seventh, just to refresh, you know, what she's come up to, so that you can catch up, and then you should be good for me.
That would be great.
Should be a good thing. We're really happy to have you here. You present very well in all aspects of your interviews and resumes, and stand-up forest personality, too.
Thank you.
So, welcome to Rockland, and we're going to put you to work.
Sounds good.
All right.
Welcome. Looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, really. Looking forward to it. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Another piece of the puzzle is in place, Mr. Chairman.
It is, too, and, you know, particularly the town, you know, we've been going around the corner, it's just been a long corner, but we're still been going around it the whole time, never once really got lost on any straight or narrow road. So, we're adding beautiful pieces to the puzzle, and it's going to be better every single day. So, welcome aboard. All right. Ambulance fees, fire prevention, permit fees by the chief, Mr. Duffy.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having me on your agenda tonight. I come before you, submitted a letter to the board for increasing ambulance rates, as well as fire prevention fees and permit fees. The ambulance rates were last changed January of 2018. It's soon to be coming before the board to re-up the rates, but there is legislation that is currently in the bill process that will limit a town's ability to increase rates more than a certain percentage. So, I wanted to kind of get out ahead of that and get our rates to where they need to be today. I base our rates on what it costs to run the ambulance, personnel costs, maintenance costs, cost of the vehicles. So that's all taken into account when I present these rates to you. The new rates are listed on the, on this letter that I gave to you, so I asked you that if you could approve those rates. The fire prevention permit fees, those were last, those were last voted on and changed December of '04, December 13th of '04, is the note that I found. So it's been quite a while since we've even looked at these fees. Deputy Woolley, I tasked Deputy Woolley with looking into these fees, comparing them with other towns, as well as, you know, how many hours would it take a person to do the job in permits and inspections? So, you know, it's not a, we streamlined a little bit, and also made the fees, you know, pretty much it's a $50 fee for anything within the town. And that's right in line with other towns such as Plymouth, and I believe Hanson. So we are, you know, we're not drastically increasing them, and it's been fifteen years since. So I asked that, you know, you approve those two fee rates, the ambulance and the fire prevention permit fees.
Chief, on the proposed rates, did you do, I know you mentioned, you're doing it based on what our, what our costs are, but did you do an analysis with any other towns to see where they are?
So I did do an analysis with the other towns, and we are, we are right, I would say, in the upper middle. So I would say we're in, you know, probably sixty to seventy percent top compared to other towns. A lot of the rates are based also on the Medicare rates.
So I was going to say, some of it is, is on the reimbursement, you're only going to get the reimbursement.
Correct. You only get the Medicare reimbursement rates, but the legislation that is, that is before the state now is going to cap what we can collect at Medicare plus three hundred percent of Medicare. So our current rates right now, we're going from Medicare plus two fifty percent to Medicare plus two seventy-five percent.
Okay.
So we are within the cap limit.
Yep.
I didn't want to go above the cap limit, and I didn't want to go up to the cap limit because, you know, it's still a fee to the townspeople that, you know, we do serve.
Any other questions?
One question, same, a note, oh, separate, oh, from Medicare or Medicaid, oh, private insurance, are we going to have any issues with them with these rates, or?
Well, it's, it's a good question, because we're, we're not battling the private insurances, but the private insurers have...
But they set their rates, too, right?
Have looked into, you know, they're looking at ambulance billing as the reason why insurance is so high, which we're probably less than one percent of what their total bills and collections and money goes to. But for some reason, they've decided to focus on us within Massachusetts. So that's a current battle, and that is why there is legislation on the, on the floor now, that's, you know, we've worked, the fire chiefs of Massachusetts, as well as the PFFM have worked with our legislators to get this enacted. One of the big things that this legislation does for us, it mandates that the insurance companies pay the provider, pay the ambulance service that does the transport. Right now, many of the insurance companies are paying the patient. So if we have a $1,500 transport, the insurance companies are sending that $1,500 check to the patients. Well, when it's between your mortgage and paying the town of Rockland ambulance, I know where that money's going to go to. So that is one thing that the legislation does mandate. So there's always going to be, there's always going to be that battle with the private insurances.
Agreed. Okay. But I mean, I guess generally speaking, the intent of this whole thing is to really keep out at the forefront, so we're always, oh, going to be like above a floor. Oh, so if a rate is set, we're always going to be at the, oh, at a level where we're not going to be hampered in terms of...
Correct. 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 We are not at the ceiling.
Exactly.
We are underneath the ceiling. So, you know, there are towns that are above that three hundred percent Medicare...
Yep.
...that when the legislation goes through, they may actually have to decrease their rates.
Understood.
So, yeah.
Any, any further discussion?
Do these ambulance billing fees go up every year, would you say, do they increase?
I think prior to eighteen, the last time I did it was fourteen.
Oh, wow.
So about every four years, it's kind of, you know, I take a look at the current contract. Like I said, I have a whole Excel sheet of salaries, what it costs to recertify, the training, the maintenance on the ambulance, the cost of the ambulance, the cost of health, our own health insurance costs, unemployment insurance, diesel, diesel fuel and gasoline for the engines, all goes into one big formula, what it comes down to, per-transport cost.
Makes sense. I just wasn't sure if it was like an every-year increase that you saw.
No, no, it was, this was just, this, I'm coming before you a little bit sooner than I would because of the legislation that's out ahead of us.
No, that makes sense.
I'll make a motion if there's no other questions. I'll make a motion to recommend the approving the rates by Chief Duffy.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
I'm not standing because my wife handles the billing.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Was that a vote on both items?
Yes.
Yes. Please approve all rates.
Thank you very much, board.
All right, now the fire station bill committee report update.
So just a quick update. I know I was before you about a month and a half ago with an update on requesting that you approve a site for us to move forward with, which was 99 Church Street, the Lincoln School. Part of that, that request for you to, what you asked of me was, you know, if there are any other sites become available that, you know, could be potential fire station site, you know, we would take a look at it, which we did. We did find another site, 201 Market Street, which is the current Rite Aid site, that we had the architects. The architects were nice enough to run a quick study for us and said it would be an excellent site as far as being enough land area to fit it. I've been trying to contact the owners of that property unsuccessfully. I know there's a lot of rumors about a family dollar or a Dollar Tree or some type of Dollar Store going in that location. I've yet to find out any information on that. So, and I've also been in touch with our land use, well, I've been trying to get in touch with our land use attorney, Attorney Galvin, who's very busy with his own meeting agenda, his own town meeting agendas, to see what, you know, what our options were, how we go about contacting and attempting to gain this property for the town. So I just wanted to let you know that we are looking at another site. It might be a little bit more palatable as far as neighbor-wise. It's in a commercial district. It's already zoned. We don't need to do any special permitting for a fire station on this site. Where on the Lincoln School we would. So moves us out of a residential neighborhood into a little bit more of a commercial area. So just wanted to give you that update.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. All right. Town Administrator's report and correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have about a half a dozen items I had to report on. I think significantly, I can announce that we have two finalists to present to the board, a town accountant finalist for you to, to interview. I did put out an email to you last week, the number was three. And, Mr. Chairman, when you and I were working on our April calendar a week or so ago, the feeling was that it's your second April meeting, which would have been the third Tuesday of April, that you would hear the three candidates. Well, we lost one in the meantime, and time may be of the essence here, and so I would respectfully request, Mr. Chairman, that the board convene a special meeting next Tuesday night for the purpose of carrying out those, those interviews. If you, if you so vote, I'm pleased to advise you that the Town Administrator Screening Committee will be ready to issue its report, and in the same night, you can interview two candidates for town accountant, and also hear the report of the screening committee and their announced finalist candidates. I'm assuming it may be three, but I suspect that's the, that's the number. So I have been in touch with Bernie Lynch, who's heading both searches. Stacy and I have been working on preparations for, for a meeting next week as well, you know, crafting questions and things like that for you. So you are informed, and I have an action item request, Mr. Chairman, that the board vote to schedule a special meeting next Tuesday.
I'll make a motion. Is it a special?
Second, then. What time are we going to have?
What's that? What time are we going to have it? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Is that okay? Got a motion in a second for six o'clock next Tuesday. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken to your cable team, Dave, earlier, I don't know if he's still here, but that April ninth meeting will not be broadcast live. He'll be away at a conference. It will be, it will be recorded, put on the town's website for you to viewing, you know, over and over again. So while it won't air live, it'll be, it'll be out there, okay? I understand, Mr. Chairman, that you've had more than one meeting with representatives from Good Energy about the municipal aggregation program. From the file that I saw today, they presented a schedule of events to you. I spoke to Good Energy representatives today. The schedule has been altered somewhat, but not significantly. They're ready to go to market with bids on April 11th. So that will be, I think, in my time here, something that you'll see another presentation and a possible award. They're also working, they have a considerable outreach program as well. I've worked with these folks, and I've been on the consumer end in the town I live in as well, and, you know, there are some frequently asked questions that they're trying to address there. Marcy had managed that right up to the, you know, pretty much up to the okay on the outreach media materials. So more on that as it develops. Mr. Chairman, I've been, this is the beginning of my third week of employment with the town. It's my first meeting with you. I have been able to meet with, with four of the five board members, and I'm scheduling some FaceTime with the fifth, so that we can talk about, you know, your expectations and your, and your wishes going forward. There is, there has been a real consistency to, you know, your goals and objectives, you know, as you've all told me all, all along, and I suspect the fifth party will be, will be doing the same. I will tell you that the goal that Bernie Lynch and I have, I have set is, we would love, we would love to be able to present, as I have four times previously, at-town meeting or a special-town meeting, the incoming town administrator. At no time, not one of those four times was the person, you know, they were signed up, and they were going to start in about a month or so, but if we can, if we can do it without sacrificing quality, we would love to, to be able to conduct the town's business and introduce the new woman or man that would be the town administrator for the town of Rockland. I think that would be, I think that would be a pretty good thing. And one thing that we can do, as busy as it is right now, of goals and objectives, I'm suggesting to the board tonight, because you're all talking to me about the current absence of some written goals and objectives, I would respectfully request, Mr. Chairman, that the board members submit before the next meeting, and I can collate them, is the first step in a, in an exercise, what your, what your goals are for the, for the short and intermediate future. The process will, you know, we generally talk about these things, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting until they're set. It would probably take two or three meetings as all in this instance, because we're really going to keep it simple if you're, and for the board to have all of its compass points set by the time the new town administrator starts, you're going to get off to the right kind of, the right kind of start.
Jimmy, you thinking the next one, the ninth or the sixteenth?
What's, what's doable?
I'll do the ninth. I have no problem with that. Just wanted to make sure...
You tell me.
Just wanted to make sure it's set out loud, which one you wanted, so.
Yeah. Oh, wow.
I'm here on bended knee asking you guys to do something instead of...
So I say the ninth is it.
Neither is it.
Yes.
Okay.
Usually my kids, if she's with homework, but hopefully he'll follow through.
Okay.
We'll get him a tutor if needed.
I'm not going to bite.
Actually, the ninth sounds doable, because you've been blurtin' them out to me. I've taken...
You just want them done on paper.
No, I've been taking, I've been taking good notes on it, so, so, yeah, there's no reason why it can't be done for the ninth.
Perfect.
Okay. I would appreciate that very much, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be helpful. And in one of those face-to-face meetings, I think Selectman Penny talked about, you know, operating policies and procedures and finance policies and things like that, the night, two or three weeks ago, that I came in to sign up for this gig with you. I was able to produce some samples of selectmen policies and procedures, and some finance policies. Both of those exercises I did on an interim basis. We've been doing this stuff since the early 90s, actually, but it lays out a process. The selectmen's operating policies and procedures starts out with really dry stuff, like how you reorganize, and, you know, who scratches their left ear, and, you know, that, that kind of stuff. But it, but it really gets into what your, it defines what's your functional relationship, you know, with yourselves, with the town administrator, with other line departments. Defining that, looking at our pancake-shaped org chart, I think is an important sign, you know, to the people out there about how you're going to conduct business. Rich, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at, at any of that stuff.
It's, it's really good.
We, hey, look, the version that you're looking at, you know, we were actually doing some, you know, some writing in the early 90s, and now we're cherry-picking from any town, any and every town we can find, and, you know, in putting those things in for your consideration. Some things you're not going to like, and so don't... Some things you're not going to like, and so don't do it. Some things, you may tell me that there are things missing, I hear. And in the finance policy, it says reading number eight. So it took eight selectmen meetings. You set aside 10 or 15 minutes per agenda and you get through it. It's, it can be done.
Finance policies. Prior to everything that happened last spring, I was working on a project defining the finance policies for the town. So I do have some of that written up to compare. And we had some other towns that were presented to us or to me. I was given some different drafts. And I started pulling some things that we were working on, presenting a final draft to the board. Obviously, the town kind of fell apart and that became less of a priority at the time.
Yeah. And there are Moody's and Standard and Poor's put out manuals on that stuff and that.
You and I talked, we have a lot of unwritten rules, things that.
We have a lot.
And I'm going to talk?
Yeah, we do.
That segues into my FinCom meeting last Wednesday night.
There's a lot of unwritten rules.
I sequence this for a reason.
Why are you looking at it today?
I don't know. Lady's looking at YouTube.
One of the, so in terms of goals and objectives, I think in the amount of time that I'm here, I can be very helpful to you there. And the finance policies, I'd suggest that after-town meeting. You've got a lot of bogies flying around up there right now. And the selectmen's operating policies and procedures, we could probably get started during my time here. But the finance policies, I always like to have at least a bilateral agreement or understanding between the selectmen and the finance committee on these are the economic principles that we're going to live by or at least aims that we're going to do.
I think you have, oh, I mean, timing might be off a little bit, but maybe even, oh, I got a new town accountant, having a voice in the process too.
By the time we get to the finance policies, like you said, after-town meeting.
He'll be, he'll be.
The candidate, yeah, the candidate will be named and possibly working by sometime after, shortly after, after-town meeting. In the, one thing that came through in my discussions with members of this board too is that the incoming town administrator should be running point on the budget process. The town accounting, the accounting office is vital for information and advice and the production aspects of the budget document itself and the town meeting warrant and stuff. I see they do a very good job of that, that process aspect already. But there was something, here it is. There was a political decision made, at least tentatively, on your 70-30 revenue split at last week's, I'm sorry, the week before's FinCom meeting. It is my understanding that you have what many, many towns, same numbers too, have is that after you consider fixed and shared expenses, the revenue split formula is 70% school, 30% general government. That's very common out there, the very, the same numbers too. But it's been described to me as a gentleman's agreement. In that case, that's a trilateral agreement between the selectmen, the school committee, and the finance committee. Okay? Two legs there decided that Medicaid receipts, which are undergoing a substantial adjustment in the first place, but that the schools could retain 100% of what amounts to $400,000. I don't know what the board's position is on that. Whatever three or more of you say is all I have to know. But in terms of process, there was a political decision made there and you had an appointed town accountant that doesn't report to this body. The town administrator has to run point on those things and speak with the selectmen's voice on matters like that. So my issue with it, Mr. Chairman, was process. The value judgment, we haven't talked about, and as I say, whatever three or more of you say is all I got to know.
It wasn't just Medicare. It was also a change in the reimbursement for special education. So the state.
That is, that's the same thing.
Well, for the 504, it's actually not.
Oh, 504, yeah. Oh, it isn't? Oh, that's, that's not part, that's not a new component of the, that's a separate part?
It's a separate part on the special education reimbursement. So up until this coming fiscal year, any student that was on a 504, the district did not get any reimbursements for. But the district bared the full cost of that. So that is a new aspect that could present somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 in new revenues. And that was one of the areas that the school was looking at, not do the 70-30 split because they're bearing the full cost of those kids right now on the 504.
And those are, those are income-eligible families. If, for instance, you had.
No, that's not, so.
That's everything?
It's on.
So 504 is not a Medicaid-funded source?
It is not.
504 stuff is brand-new to me.
So 504 is, so you've got IEPs, which is a special child test and qualify that they have specific or special needs for their educational purposes. 504 is accommodations. So a student may test where they don't fit into certain accommodations that would qualify them for a special ed program or an IEP. But there are certain things within their education process that they need certain and special accommodations for whatever they find. And up until now, while the state acknowledged and would allow 504s and it would be a written document between the parents and the school on what those accommodations were, the state never reimbursed the schools. There were additional costs that was burdened onto the school, but the state didn't reimburse them. Starting this year, the state is actually going to reimburse the school systems on whether a student is on a full IEP or if they're on a 504. So there is some new additional revenues coming in. And based on the number of students that we have currently in the school system that are on 504s, we've got an estimate back somewhere between an additional $100,000 to $200,000 in new reimbursements that was never allowed in the past.
If I may respond to that, Mr. Chairman. I did meet with the school business manager, who's impressive. I understand she's new too. And Eric Kinsheriff and John Madden, two or three hours before that FinCom meeting. And the split issues aside, the IEP portion, Jane thought that some new processes that they've instituted over at the schools could squeeze more income there. That was more of an incremental increase in our original revenue estimate. The second piece, the 504 piece, we were throwing around a, probably a representative number, but not a true number. If it's $200,000 in a new revenue program that's rolling out on a statewide basis, for budgeting purposes, we ought to anticipate about 50% of that.
So that's where the.
Because the rollout, the rollout of new programs and things like that, things happen.
Their conservative estimate was $200,000.
Time lags.
And we were talking about that. I think a better figure to use would be $100,000.
And that's what, so that's what we bureaucrats agreed to as an approach for amending that revenue estimate in the middle of this particular budget process. And then I heard two days later that I don't think there was any disagreement about how to estimate a gross number. It's just that the split changed. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, whatever position you take on it.
One of the things, just, Jim, like as you mentioned, the whole, and I was back in, I think, 2011, when we started the 70-30 split, I was on the school committee, as I think I mentioned. And it was a handshake agreement. And the problem, in my opinion, with that agreement is our revenues weren't defined. So the revenues that were available, some could argue they were manufactured one way or another.
They went through a filtering process.
Yes.
They went through, yes, a significant filtering process.
And I think we want to, and I think we want to move on from that. Actually, like Mr. Alafra and Mr. Ryan could probably attest, there's a lot in this meeting that almost seems like we're back in last April and May, just in terms of the talk about the expectations and the 70-30 split. And I'm happy we're, oh, we've actually come full circle in all this frankly. But one of the things we were talking about was actually way better defining the 70-30 split. So there's expectations on every side. Creating a long-term, I think, and I don't want to get into my goals, but a financial team, that includes the school. So we're all on the same page about what our revenues are going to be for a year. But in terms of this new potential revenue, in terms of going forward, frankly, I think it should be, your job is, you know, taking the direction of this board and then figuring out, based on what our desires are, the implications of hypothetically, like if we exempted this part of revenue from the 70-30 split, working then with the school department and the, and John Madden and Eric Kinsheriff to make sure the implications of that would be doable and sustainable. And I think previously, like as I think you alluded to, there's been, just the practice has been, some people would work through elected officials, others appointed officials, and nothing really ever came through a clearinghouse, which is you in this position. So that being said, earlier in the meeting, we saw a special town meeting article for $300,000 specifically for special ed. My feeling is, and it's been always shown, especially over the past few years, the school department has been grappling with the challenges of increasing special ed costs. Like if they have a new revenue area that helps them address that specific issue, I would be fine with exempting that revenue from the 70-30 split because that's exactly what that revenue is supposed to do in the first place.
That's an interesting pairing, yeah.
So the challenge, two years in a row now, we've had to put an article in to supplement for special education. We've been hit with, two years in a row, with some students moving in. And I was with Dr. Kron last week, and I don't know if the determination has come through yet, but they were doing an evaluation of a student that just moved into town that, depending on how that evaluation goes, could impact us $220,000 of new costs with a student moving in. So it's the challenge, you know, if you get away from the 70-30 split and you start to exempt certain funds going in, how do you account for that? So it starts to add to the complication. But then we run into the same thing as if they continue to get impacted by rising costs with students that happen to move into town or get it. We just faced it a couple of years ago on the veterans. We had two years in a row, remember that? Where we had a number of veterans that moved into town that impacted, we had to do some special $250,000.
Wow.
It literally moved in in one year. So those are some of the things that it's hard sometimes to predict. Now, the other thing is, all of a sudden, if three or four of these students move out of district, now all of a sudden, we don't have those costs anymore. You know, it's a hard.
And that would be reflected in the revenue that would come back. We wouldn't be billing for those services so that revenue wouldn't be available and we wouldn't need it.
But the problem is, is that the reimbursement rates are kind of level across the board. So if you have a child that has special needs that may only add $10,000 or $20,000 to cost, that reimbursement will cover it. If you've got someone that we have to send out of district, we don't, the reimbursements don't come close to covering them. That's the problem.
But the 504 would be different from circuit breaker, right? Because the.
And the 504 is not, so it's a lower reimbursement rate.
Yeah, but that's what I'm talking about. That's the new revenue that we're talking about. So it would help that, but indirectly address the bigger dollars that we're dealing with as well. And if this could give, I mean, we see that they're coming back anyways, you know, through special town meeting. And what the school department is grappling with to make those dollars work, to be able to serve the kids they need to serve, I'd rather give it to them at the front end, so arguably, they're not trying to balance everything and meanwhile, there's a kid wondering how they're going to get services, but it'll take a lot of the, I don't want to say tension either, but a lot of the unknown out of the room if they have that money up front, I guess.
No, I agree. I think if we continue to see those costs rise, and I was surprised when I saw the amount on the special town meeting warrant, if we can, we're currently giving them 70 cents on the dollar, if we can give them the full reimbursement of the services that they're providing, then I think I'm okay with it. I mean, we're still going to continue to see, I think, that number climb anyway because it does fluctuate so often.
It does, yeah.
And there's really nothing you can do with it. And to Rich's point, somebody could move into town tomorrow and the student could never step foot in Rockland and be schooled someplace else and we could be hit with a massive bill. I've worked with school a little bit as far as a couple of different strategies, as far as how to create a couple of revolving accounts for special education. But I think this is a good first step in at least giving them what we can do. And if it sets a precedent, I guess it sets a precedent, but we really have to take a look at what that 70-30 split consists of anyway?
Yeah, maybe this will be how we define it long-term.
And we will have some new things that'll be coming into town, some new revenue streams coming up eventually within the next year or two anyway. And it'll force us, I think, to take a look at all of that as well when we put the 70-30 split together.
Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied that I've provoked some discussion. No, I am. That was my intent on that. And on the matter of the revenue estimates, it's very common that towns have summit meetings or so in January to talk about their revenue estimates. And the participants there are, all departments, departmental representatives are invited. And your accounting office and your administrative offices go through the whole menu. We want, we want a certain confidence level among you all. It generally takes a second cleanup meeting because on the, what is it, the first Monday or the Monday of the last week in January is when the governor is supposed to issue House One, including your local aid estimates. And in recent years, there's been, at least on the revenue piece, virtually no change from House One through the entire legislative process. So when those numbers are known, you call the folks back together for a quick meeting. You know, here's the change. And then. And then at the back end, once charter school enrollments have been accounted for and other things like that, your charges, the charge sheet in your, in your state aid package oftentimes goes up. So there are those adjustments, but it's time a meeting for January and get a consensus. The state government does that, and they include people from the Mass Taxpayers Foundation and stuff on there, in the AIM, Allied Industries of Massachusetts, is that what AIM stands for? But, you know, they, they participate in that, and there's a consensus revenue estimate that's, that's developed. So take those suspicions away, you know, just by scheduling a meeting.
Put that in our operating procedures.
There you go. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Should we take a vote on that? Removing it from the 70-30 split, seeing as Finance Committee took a vote.
I'm fine with that. I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second.
And this is just for the, the new revenue source on the 504 reimbursement.
For special education.
On the special education.
Aim Medicaid.
Aim Medicaid.
Oh, Aim Medicaid, because they're one and the same for that purpose.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor? See the end of his vote.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. All right, Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Penny.
Election Saturday, April 13th, there's a lot of, a lot of races.
A lot of unopposed.
So just want to remind everyone that there is an election coming up on Saturday the 13th, and encourage everyone to get out and vote. And I also want to wish the, all the Rockland High School spring teams the best of luck as the season is just opening up this week. That's it.
Ms. Nyman.
I don't think I have anything for that.
Mr. Mullin.
I have a few things, as always.
Whoa, yeah, here we go. Picking up where you left off.
We've got time around this.
Anyways.
Just kidding, Mike.
Just really quick, I'm, I do just want to emphasize, and like I didn't realize how much it would happen when Jim was talking, but really tonight, I really did feel that we came full circle in the past year, based on, I mean, talking about expectations and policies and procedures and, oh, and the 70-30 split where, I think we're, oh, and all the other stuff we're talking about and the, and the excitingness we have and the, and the hopeful upcoming highs we have, I think we're really up to, like, a lot of good things. And I'm just frankly excited about that. I do want to mention two things. One, I want to remind folks of Saturday, April 29th, that is the Union Street Economic Development Framework Open House, and that's going to be held at the, at the Sandpaper Factory at 83 East Water Street. As we mentioned before, we've been embarking on, like, economic development, our plan for Union Street as a town. And this is really a way to, oh, you know, we've been brainstorming a bunch of exciting ideas and focusing on, you know, this area of Union Street, the area up by the community center, where the fire station is, down in the square by Dunkin' Donuts and EB Lad and the rail trail. So we have our bunch of focus points that we have some really creative and innovative ideas for. And, and the 27th, which is a Saturday from 12 to 5, will be a chance to really, you know, show the public and really gauge some feedback, to see if people like those ideas, if they're too extreme, really to make sure they fit in the town. So we're excited about that. And on a, like a very related note, I just wanted to share, like, a Reimagine Rockland update. The end of last year, we mentioned that, oh, Reimagine Rockland entered into, like, a partnership agreement with the Social Chamber. And after long last and a bunch of, like, agreements, like, writing bylaws and a whole bunch of other boring stuff, I'm very happy to announce that this morning, we had the first kickoff meeting of that, of our work together with the Chamber. And they're going to be working with us on a lot of great things. We're going to be able to launch a website, they're going to be able to do a lot of our financial reporting, hopefully if we can raise money for Reimagine Rockland. And so like, it's like a really good partnership we have with the Chamber. And I think, oh, like, as we're trying to give Reimagine Rockland our new legs and a new identity, I think it's really going to be helpful in that regard. So exciting stuff all, all around, and I think that was under five minutes, so I'll move on.
No, 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 honestly, you know, I, I do want to say, you know, first, Mike, great meeting tonight. You really, Friday, you're a game tonight, so, good job.
Don't I do that every meeting?
That's what you think. And I just announced some office hours. I have office hours next Wednesday, April 10th, 9 to 11 here in Town Hall. That's it.
And me, on Friday, April 5th, 2019, we're going to walk another police officer out the door. Jack O'Connor is retiring after 31 years of dedicated service to the town. Come down to the station if you want to be part of that ceremony, and, and there's a reception at Emerald Hall in Abington at 7 o'clock that night. Welcome to Jen, welcome to Jim. These people are here to help us, they're doing a great job. We really look good, quite frankly, not only on paper, but-
Have a beehive.
But even sitting here, you know? I, I had a little accident with a beehive over the weekend, so-
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're both, this is an unusual situation, we're both under the long shadow of Marcy Birmingham, so we've got our work cut out for us.
This is the first meeting AM, you know? This, I was going to say was at 7 o'clock AM after Marcy. But, you know, something, everybody goes on. She's not the first person to come and go, and she's certainly not going to be the last. We'll miss her, of course, but you know something? We've, we've learned from watching her, the next guy is in big trouble. Because if he doesn't measure up, he's going to be told.
Or a woman.
Or a woman, I just, I don't mean, I don't mean it that way. I'm a, I'm a non-sexitarian, if you want to, if you want to believe that, you know? I don't care if you're a man or a female, I just, we're all the same, you know? But anyway, they're, they're going to have big shoes to fill, and, and we're going to make sure that they do. And in a nice way, you know? Nobody expects anybody to be just like somebody else, but we expect you to be close. And we expect you to, you know, we expect people to be, we'd like to turn the corner, quite frankly, and have a, a nice pleasant government, you know? We're, we're working for you. Everybody is a customer, who's on the other side of the TV tonight, don't feel like you can't come up, you'll get a fear shake, no matter whether your problem's an old one or a new one. And I can't say we're going to solve everything, but we'll give it our best. And with that, I'll let the turn, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Penny.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nyman, all in favor of?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Laughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O-
Yes.
And Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
And I say yes also. Mr. Mullin.
Good night.